Okay. Thank you all for your comments and all your kind words about Tiffin. I echo a lot of those, especially about the mayor. We are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Okay, moving into resolution ordinances. Due to the purpose of this special meeting, we will not be discussing any resolutions or ordinances. Now being under other business, I would like to outline the process of how we're going to proceed with the interview process. And if I have consensus from council that you guys are in agreement with my recommendations, then we can move forward. But if there's any objections or changes, totally open to discussion. So the interviews will be conducted in a alphabetical order of the candidate's last name. So therefore, Brian Cole will be first, Don Yanatuno will be second, Zach Perkins will be third, and fourth will be Bryce Riggs. Each candidate will be given their presentation at the podium and will have a maximum of 15 minutes to speak. Post the candidates' presentations is when the question-answer portion of the process will begin. The candidates will be asked to sit in the vacant, the two vacant seats in the council area, and those that are on council who are candidates can remain in their existing seats. At this time, council will have the opportunity to ask each candidate their questions. In order to achieve efficiency, I would ask that each council member attempts to ask all of their questions at once when it is their turn. Of course, if you have follow-up questions, you'll have the opportunity to do that. I just don't try to avoid any scattered questions. If there are questions for all of the candidates and not just one in particular, we will take turns of which candidate answers first, similar to a panel forum. This portion of the process will occur until all of council's questions are asked, and then we will move into adjournment unless there's any other business. So with that said, does anyone have any questions, changes, or objections to the process I just outlined? Yes?
Question, Madam President. As far as the council members go, can we go in the order of what is on our agenda tonight? Perkins, Perry, Wilkins, Gilligan, and Tuno Jones and Leopard? Or do we want to change that up at all?
I have no objection against to that, but it's up to council. Yes, Councilman Gilligan?
I'm afraid I don't follow Councilman Leopard.
You're essentially saying, if I'm understanding correct, you're essentially saying that Perkins would go first, Councilwoman Yanatuno would go second, but then how would we handle?
Well, you see, no. I was in order, the order of questions being asked by council members.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, I see.
Can we go in the same order that we have on the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely.
That kind of makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any other questions or objections to the process? Okay, so we will proceed. So at this time, then, I would ask for Mr. Cole, if you don't mind taking the stand.
Okay. Really, the reason why I nominated myself for this position is I've been part of Tiffin for over 50 years now. I came here in 1970 with my family. My father was transferred down here with his Albion Corporation. Till his recent passing, he lived in the same house for 53 years. So my point of running was really, I feel like Tiffin is such a great place. I've lived many places, many different-sized cities. I've lived from cities the size of Ada, Ohio, with all 3,000 people, to Charlotte, North Carolina. I've seen different cities, I've seen different things, and I just, I feel like Tiffin has so much to offer. And Mayor Mottz, you've done an excellent job. Like I said, I've been in Tiffin through the bad times, the good times. And I just feel like, I felt like, you know, it's, people can be, I hear a lot of grumblings out on the street when I'm out walking around, and I think it's unjust, grumblings. And I felt like, you know, you can either be part of the problem or part of the solution. So when this came up, I really felt like it was time to be part of the solution and throw my name in the ring. And I've, myself personally, I've led, I've led, I've been in leadership roles my whole career, between coaching and my job I have now. I've led the company through the pandemic as National Sales Manager. We've come out on the other side stronger than we, than when we went in. You know, so I just, I felt like I had the responsibility, I've had the experience and things to do outstanding job in this, in this realm. So that's kind of where I'm at with everything.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And then Councilwoman Yanatuno, I believe you're next.
Well, I just want to start out by saying I did not make a public announcement to run or call any of you to ask for your support or vote. I have no hidden agenda. I want you to be able to decide based on our experiences and our knowledge for the position of mayor. I love Tiffin and I'm retired. My husband and I could live anywhere, but we choose to stay in Tiffin. Being a lifelong resident, I understand all the workings and behind-the-scenes connections here. Mayor Mottz will be a tough act to follow for anyone. Being retired, I have the time to familiarize myself with everything now and hit the ground running when I am sworn in. When the residents in Tiffin select their new mayor for January 1st, 2024, I will do everything I can to help the new mayor with a smooth transition before and after they take office, if asked. This phrase sums things up nicely for me. I will be setting in place a framework so Tiffin will continue to succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Councilman Perkins?
Thank you. A leader is best when people barely know he exists. When his work is done, his aim fulfilled, they will say, "We did it ourselves." This is from Chinese philosopher Lao Chiu. This quote is a fantastic quote because it has many different parts here. At the first part, it says, "A leader is best when people barely know he exists." What that's telling me is true leaders are selfless, just as a mayor should be here in this town. It is the most selfless position you could possibly take for our city. It's not about you as the mayor, it's about the city, and it's about the businesses. It also talks about unifying people and not dividing. Lastly, and I think the most important thing out of this, is "we did it ourselves." Great leaders produce more leaders. That's what they do. They're always getting people ready to take over their position for when they move on to whatever it is. My name is Zach Perkins. My title is Councilman-at-Large for the City of Tiffin, self-employed. I do freelance work for businesses here locally, you know, business management, business operations, human resources, those kind of things. I never joined city council with the intentions of being mayor. We all thought Mayor Mottz was just going to die in office at 80 years old, and we'd all be happy, and everybody would go about their day. So there was no intention of ever doing that, there was no, you know, getting ready for that, no preparation work, anything of the such. I just wanted to join city council because I wanted to make a difference in the community. You know, I think I have kind of a unique skill set, and I feel like I can use that to make a difference. And that's where it all stems from. In 2011, the city elected the youngest mayor ever, Aaron Mottz, and he ran on a platform that he titles "Retail Politics," which is basically a customer-service-style approach to problem-solving, businesses and citizens. And that rolls right into what I've done forever, as much as I've even tried to get out of it. But I've spent the last 20 years of my life in probably the most underrated industry in the United States, and that's retail and hospitality management. It's grueling mentally and physically. It's a tough industry, but if you can tough it out and you can get used to the environment, you can build a pretty strong skill set throughout those years, especially on that customer-service-based focus. Some of the main things that you learn are resilience, which you develop a very thick skin for criticism, and a lot of things can be thrown at you in that industry, a lot. Transparency and honesty. You have to be 100% transparent about what you're doing and why you're doing it, or you will never, ever gain anyone's trust. Budgeting and cost controls. I think I've been alive for four recessions. Sorry, Steve. And, you know, I've been managing through two of those, and I've learned that there's two, there's three ways to handle this, but there's only one successful way to handle it. Most people are going to tighten their budget, they're going to trim any fluff off, they're maybe going to lay some people off, things of that nature, and then they hope for the best. And that's exactly what we didn't do during the pandemic here in Tiffin. And you can see exactly what happened. So we did those things, but on top of that, we consistently push for economic development and growth. And by doing that, we kept our head above water, and we're now ahead of everyone else. So it's made a world of difference. Effective communication, I think this is a good one. So a lot of people believe effective communication is public speaking, one-on-one consultations, small groups, things of that nature, which is all true, but that's about 10% of it. The other 90% is listening. And you need to do a lot of listening. There's 18,000 people in this city, along with all the great businesses we have that exist, and I believe that it's so crucial to have someone that is listening to everyone. Lastly, solutions. You know, everybody wants to find problems, and usually when they find those problems, it's all about finding blame for that problem. You know, who started it, where it's going, what's going on? But a true leader is finding solutions to problems. About 11 years ago, I became a dad. So if you knew me before 11 years ago, but you haven't talked to me since, you have no idea who I am. I'm a different person. I became a dad, and it's by far my biggest accomplishment ever in life. Even if I was to become mayor, being a dad, it still trumps that. You know, my kids are everything. Nothing means more to me than family. Everything I do, I do to make their future brighter, whether it's here on council, whether it's playing Danny in the Super World Series that we had last week, you know? It's all about that, you know, and it's all about 20 years from now. It's not about tomorrow, it's that long, that long-term plan. You know, I'm a family guy, I have deep roots in this town, and I went absolutely nothing but the best for that. It's as simple as that. Lastly, I just want to thank you guys, council, everybody in the audience for coming, and considering me for the possibility of being the next mayor. I'm excited to listen and learn from the administration, who, you know, comes in every day and does everything they possibly can to make this town better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs?
Good afternoon, Madam President, and members of council. First off, I want to say thank you for all your time in this process. I know how extremely important this process is for our future, and I do not take it lightly. I will say, eight years ago, a young college student sat right here, it was a pew before, if you all remember that, it was very crickety, I sat back here in my first council meeting. It was Rich Klein was the president, I was the mayor, and I got to watch council members do, you know, city business. And since then, it hasn't changed, and I've continued to come back, you know, year after year, meeting after meeting. When I'm not here at council, I can tell you I'm sitting at home watching council meetings. I've always had an interest in this community. It's one of those things, I think, early on, folks told me, said, you know, "Bryce, you're going to burn out eventually." And I think it's important to understand my why. Why am I running? And so for me, really, I'm running because the people, the community, it's extremely important to me to continue to see the momentum we've seen. I'm running because of my, the friends I see on the street, those are colleagues, as a chamber president, I get to see those folks, and, you know, I want to see them successful. And it really takes strong leadership here at the city, takes strong leadership in council, strong leadership in department heads as well, strong leadership in the mayor's role. Would tell you a little more about me. On a personal level, I moved to this community in fourth grade. A lot of folks don't know that I'm not actually originally from Tiffin and Seneca County, but I moved here with my family. I did all the things, and I did the Parks and Rec camp, I know what's going on this week, and those couple of weeks. Growing up, I got, you know, slowly more involved, I attended Huddersfield University. It was my sophomore year, I attended a Republican event, and I saw this gentleman, Bill Reinecke, who announced he was running for state representative. I left that, and I went to my afternoon class, and I said, "Hey, I really want to learn more about that guy and what he does, and I want to get more engaged in the business community." I reached out to him shortly thereafter, I was involved in this campaign. Shortly thereafter, I was at my first council meeting. Shortly thereafter, I was at my next meeting, my next meeting, and I got more engaged with the community. I really get excitement of working with people to, you know, find solutions for our community. And that's really, I think, the reason why I haven't burned out, and I've been so excited about what we do. From there, I got an internship with the, at the time, the Seneca Industrial and Economic Development Corporation, where I got to work with the small businesses in our community that were growing, investing, that were excited for Tiffin as much as I was. And so really, really, my job was to help facilitate, remove any roadblocks they had to make sure they can invest in our community. I got to meet people, folks like Lindsay Suey Aspire, they want to move their office here, and it's like, how do we make that happen? So really, I got to be on the ground floor, working with Mayor Aaron Mottz, David Zach, and others, to really help promote this community as a business community. From there, I moved up the ranks, and I moved on to Tiffin University, where I got to work with Councilperson Wilkins, meeting with alumni, and so really, them, you know, alumni telling their story about their time at Tiffin, again, another, you know, different angle that most people don't get to see, and they get to talk about their time coming back to this community and how excited they were. Thereafter, I moved to the chamber, where I've been there for the last two years, we've seen record membership growth of 40% since 2020. We finally, sort of, you know, made through the pandemic, we actually thrived through the pandemic, we're the highest financial standing we've ever been with the chamber, and then also with Destination Seneca County. I'm proud that I get to promote this community every single day of my life. I know I've worked with Councilman Perkins, Councilman Perry with different bike, you know, tours and those kind of things. And so it's really exciting for me. So really, my why for running is my love for this community. I grew up here, I received my education here, and I've really grown professionally here. So that's really why my, that's, that is my why, and why I'm running, to become the next mayor of the City of Tiffin. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce, I don't know if you want to sit down, because at this time, I'll ask that you and Mr. Cole, if you can please come sit here with, in the council area for the question-and-answer portion of this meeting. Okay. So again, this, this portion of the meeting is where the question-and-answer process will take place. And as requested, we will go in order of the council members identified within the agenda. So Councilmember Perkins?
I will abstain from asking any questions just due to the fact that I am running. I don't want it to seem that I'm being hard on someone or asking something, you know, ridiculous, so you can take me out of there.
Okay. Councilmember Perry, let me just, you?
Move to the important one. First off, I just want to thank all four of you for running. It is awesome to see, you know, interest in this position. I find you all very qualified, it was fun reading through all your guys' resumes, and I hope whoever, you know, does get the nomination, I hope to see all four of your names going for the next election as well. I think I'd be lucky to have any one of you. But my questions, I think we are going to be getting into some financial hard times in the next year or so. So I guess my first question would just be, you know, how familiar you all are with working with a budget? What's the biggest budget you've kind of worked with? And making tough decisions, those kind of things? So how would you want to just?
Is this for all of them?
I would, I would like to hear everyone's answer.
Yeah, so?
Just go in the order that?
The alphabetical order, yeah.
Go in order and then drop the top one down.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
Yes, so?
So, Mr. Cole, I guess that would be to you first.
The largest budgets I've worked with, I've had a couple areas where I've worked with very large budgets, worked with it as president of the Coaches, National Track and Field Coaches Association, which is one of the largest coaches' associations in the country across the board. I think NCAA football is the only one that's larger than us numbers-wise and budget-wise. I've also worked, like I said, the company I work for now is an international company. I'm in charge of all sales in North America, which includes Canada, United States, Central America. So I've worked very closely with their budgets. We're, you know, $20 million a year company. So I've had very, I've had great opportunity to work with, with those budgets and, you know, and during the pandemic, it was a very difficult time, and there's going to be some difficult times coming ahead, no two ways around it. But I think we just need to realize that that's coming and be smart fiscally, not only with, you know, it's kind of like just being a family. You're going to have to be as fiscally, financially with the city as you would with your family. I think we also need to look at, you know, still trying to bring in industries that may be a little more recession-proof. We have great opportunities here in Tiffin, having two universities to work with, to maybe bring in some more of those industries and companies that are more of the cutting-edge new industries. I mean, Tiffin, for a long time, has been an automotive town, that's why I'm here. So I know that, you know, the times are changing, so with having the two universities in town, and both of them are outstanding institutions, you know, I think that's the thing that the city can work with them and start maybe tailoring majors that would help bring companies that would want to come here because they know there's qualified people in town already.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then Councilwoman Yanatuno?
I'll answer directly to you.
You, I'll cry today.
Well, as you know from my resume, that I served on the Tiffin City School Board for 18 years, and on that, during that 18 years, I've had to unfortunately make devastating cuts several times. It's a $25 million budget, but it also depends on if levies pass and don't pass and things like that. You'll remember the more recent cuts were when we reorganized the entire district, where we have a pre-K at Lincoln, we have Crowe, I mean, Washington 1, 2, Crowe 2, 3, and Noble 4, 5. We cut drastically, busing. Very devastating to the whole community, but it's something that needed to be done, and we did get, because there's a five-year forecast that school districts have to do, and so we got it down in the black for that five-year forecast. And so it's tough to do that stuff, but you just have to do it. And I've been part of negotiations for contracts with unions and non-union entities. And again, once you get to the money, there's not a whole lot you can do. So I've been through both those processes too.
Thank you. And then Councilman Perkins?
Man, they've ranged pretty far. I've had them $700,000, which are impossible to manage, once they get, the smaller they are, the harder they are. And the largest I've ever dealt with is actually recently at $2 billion. Huge. So it, they're all over the place. I said it in the speech here a little bit ago, there's, you know, in business, when times become tough, it's all about sales, you know? And I, and I understand that this is government and that's different, but as long as you have economic development and you have growth, and you're continually to push those things, then income taxes stay high, you know? And that income for the city is going to stay out there. So you're still pushing that higher amount of revenue. So I think it's a combination of both. You're, of course, trimming the fat, like I've said, you're getting rid of any extras you're watching where every single dollar goes, but on top of that, you have to push through and continue growing the city. You have to, so.
Why'd you look at me when you said "trim the fats"?
Mr. Riggs?
So the largest budget I've dealt with has been the chamber in Destination Seneca County, just recently, but there's one thing I've learned, you know, not one individual manages a budget alone, so it takes a true team. And I think the big thing is we have a real asset in Administrator Dale Thornton, as well as Kathy Coffin at the Finance Office. And the big thing is that, you know, I think that one thing is that has shown us, and this last year with COVID, you know, what, what did the city do when things got tough, right? So, you know, I know that, you know, Administrator Thornton, Mayor Aaron Mottz got together with the department heads, and they figured out a plan, because instead of, you can go through with a red pen, and you can go through the lines, and you can make cuts, right? But at the end of the day, you know, the folks that really know their departments best are the department heads. There's a reason they're hired, and that's really the biggest strength of our administration, of the administration, is the department heads. And so my first thing would be, you know, how do you work hand-in-hand with the, you know, industry professionals who deal with their budgets and try to figure out what's, you know, easy to be cut? I know in the last cut that the city did during COVID, I believe it was in the range of $800,000 or so, maybe my number's a little off, but what they did is that was, you know, stuff that, you know, the public didn't see, but those are things that they could continue on as is, and that gets extremely important. I would say as well, I mean, we were pretty fortunate during COVID, the city as well, with, you know, the income dollars being consistently higher than other communities around us, we can always expect that to happen. So, you know, being the city, the largest financial, the best financial health it's ever been in its history, it's important that we spend those dollars wisely. If you look at the county, they have things such as a budget stabilization fund. So it's how do we take our dollars that we have today and ensure that they're for the future, so when times do get tough, and in case those income tax dollars aren't there, that we can, you know, really, you know, stabilize and make through that. The last thing you want to do is obviously cut, you know, employees and personnel, that's the last thing you want to do. And I think, again, working with the department heads, working with the awesome team that here's here at the city, you can really make those things happen and really set us up for success, because we know downturn's going to come eventually, we can't expect that this is going to continue for forever.
Thank you.
Awesome. Just one more question. As mayor, I would like all you guys' input on what you think Tiffin's biggest need is currently, whether it be a business, whether it be another park, whatever you think, just what you think Tiffin's biggest need is. So start with?
We'll start with Don on this one.
I'll start with Don. Move everybody down.
Oh, good, I can get the answers in first.
There you go.
To me, business is always important, always need to bring, that's just a given, you have to always keep bringing business in, but housing is our biggest concern, and we need more housing. On my street alone, every time one of those condos come up, there's a fight, there's a bidding war to get these things, and because they're just not available. And so we just need more housing.
Thank you.
Would be the main thing for me.
Right.
Thank you. Councilman Perkins?
Yeah, will you repeat that?
Just Tiffin's biggest need.
First, two, depends how you look at it. And Don hit it with, on, you know, the nail on the head with housing. Affordable housing is huge. It is, I've heard it a million times, I heard it when I was campaigning out, you know, we need as much as we can possibly get, and so I'm, I'm excited that the hotel went through, well, not the hotel, I'm sorry, it's the other side with the housing. So it is a big deal, but I do know that we are going into massive amounts of sewer repairs, massive. So I, there's a big need for sewer repair, a big need. We still have brick sewers and things of that nature. So that's another big cost coming, and I know that that's not a, an expansion, a developmental answer that a lot of people want to hear, but it's a real answer. You know, I know we're going to spend millions upon millions of dollars fixing those things to make sure that we have proper sewer repairs, so.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs?
So I do the guy that steals his answer, but same. No, I'm just kidding. So I think the big thing, obviously, is housing, right? So it's no secret that we have a shortage. If you look at this study that was completed in 2019 with the good folks over at the Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership, it really showed that there is obviously a housing shortage, but it's one of those things, I think, to get a study completed and to say, you know, hey, we have a housing shortage, okay, great. And then I think that, that plan, unfortunately, you got to communicate with the public, the public knew that, you know, basically already knew what they, you know, said what the public already knew, we have a housing shortage, our Realtors will tell you that, look at the folks that are building homes in our community, these things are already purchased before they're even built. It shows it. And so really, the biggest thing is that I think how you can support that is, in the 2019 survey that was completed, that there's additional research and information needed to get done. If you look at the downtown plan, it was initially done, you know, really, the phase one was, here's the points, and then phase two of that, that plan was, so here's where they can go. And so that includes a couple of different aspects on how you make that possible. One of it is the mayor's housing committee that was formed recently by Mayor Aaron Mottz, and how do you bring that, you know, really to life and continue to do great things with it? And secondly, I think, you know, the mayor started that committee, but it's working hand-in-hand with new president and CEO Aaron Mottz, and really putting a full-court press on that. I think it, you know, helps take care of a lot of other issues we have. Again, no shortage, no secret that we have a labor shortage, we have more folks leaving Tiffin, Ohio than we have coming in for work. Why is it? A lot of it is because we don't have a housing here. And so one of those things, if I can get a higher wage out of our community, you know, it's one of those things, I'll go. But if I can find, you know, a job here and live here, what a great opportunity. So I think it's extremely important. And the other thing I would, you know, echo is the sewer, you know, twofold, right? We know that there's a survey right now with MS Consultants regarding the long-term control plan, it's extremely important. And we got, initially got the plan completed, but this was the price tag. A lot has changed since then. I know the price has significantly increased since that original study came out, and so we really got to find a way, how do we, you know, pay for those sewer, you know, repairs that are needed to be in compliance with the EPA in the long term? One, and then two, you know, you don't want to strap it on, you know, our futures back in the, you know, the last 10 years of it, so it needs to be done by 2040-ish, and so we don't want it, you know, by 2030, the more we kick the can down the road, you know, really, the more we hurt our future. And the other thing I would add, right now, there's really no comprehensive city plan for ongoing sewer maintenance. Really, all the sewer work that's been done is for the EPA plan, which really takes care which really takes care of the new sewers and then the ones that are in the plan to get them separated. But there really is no plan. So I'd be working with Matt Watson, Brandon Burner and others to figure out long-term plan. We really, you know, found and addressed that problem with the road and bridge levy, uh, because we found, we know we had a shortage of funding. So how do you then understand what the true, uh, cost of, uh, long-term main, uh, sewer maintenance is? And then allocate dollars towards that. So we're not, again, 15 years from now, we're sitting there repairing all these sewers and then putting it on the, you know, future of our, our children and, and having them pay for our problems.
Thank you. And then Mr. Cole.
Uh, I'll echo what everybody said before me. Um, housing, I can tell you that from experience moving back here a year ago, a little over a year and a half ago, um, when we came up here from Charlotte trying to find a house that fit our needs was almost next to impossible. Um, you know, and you do, you see houses that are just going for crazy costs because there's such a low market, it becomes a bidding war. Um, with that, kind of rolls into it, could run, rolls into a whole thing, infrastructure. I think all that kind of fits together. Um, cause I think what, you know, Tiffin has to start looking at, like I said this before, is some, some larger industries that are going to bring more people, not just a, not just a business that's going to hire 10 or 12, 15 people. We need industries like we used to have, um, with Hayes Albion, you know, those type of, um, Webster, Tiffin Environmental, those type of companies that are going to employ large numbers of people. But the problem is it's hard to get those companies to say, yeah, Tiffin's where we want to be when there's no housing for my employees that I'm going to bring in. Um, so I would say, uh, my answer is housing rolling kind of into infrastructure. We need to be able to get those in line so that we can start working on bringing in some other industry.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Okay. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Wilkins.
Hello. Um, I want to thank all of you, um, for nominating, self-nominating yourselves for the mayor position. You have big shoes to fill. Um, I'm new to the council, so thank you, council, for, um, allowing me to join you all. Um, since I'm kind of getting thrown to the wolves here. Um, my first meeting and we're interviewing the mayor, candidates for the mayor. So, um, my question to each of you is what does the first 100 days look like, um, if you were selected as, uh, as the mayor?
Thank you. And we will start with Mr. Perkins, Councilmember Perkins.
A lot of listening and a lot of learning. Uh, there's fantastic administration that already exists here from, uh, you know, the chief of police and fire to Mr. Thornton and Reamer and everyone else. Um, th- the ball is already rolling and going in the right direction. So you're going to want to come in and you're going to want to listen and learn as much as possible to absorb as much as you possibly can. Um, you know, you're not coming in looking to change a lot of things. You're looking to come in to help as much as possible. Uh, it, it's a lot of listening and learning. It really is. It's, it's a simple answer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Mr. Riggs.
So the first 100 days looks for me, uh, again, echo Councilperson, uh, Perkins's statement, it's listing, right? It's building rapport. And, you know, a lot of folks I mentioned, big shoes to fill with Mayor Aaron Mott's. Uh, he's been here for over 10 years, 11 years doing this, you know, that he knows this really in the backside of his hand. Which for me, it's, you know, building the rapport with, uh, you know, the unions as we go into union negotiations is extremely important. And I think truly to, to see something through someone's perspective, to be with them. And so I know that Mayor Mott's has talked about, you know, he's, and previously, uh, he's done things such as, you know, go out, uh, in the plow. He's gone out, you know, on a, um, with the police department. He's went out with the fire department. You really have to do that because again, you're making decisions and you're working with these folks so closely, that I don't think you can truly assist them and work with them if you don't know what they do on a day-to-day basis. And I think it's probably the first 100 days for me. And then also, uh, you know, really talk about, you know, budgets. Uh, we, again, budgets are, uh, closely, uh, closely approaching. And so I know that, you know, the, uh, non-department head, the heads submitted their information, uh, department heads are submitting their information. So really, uh, for me, the first 100 days, uh, would probably honestly be in Administrator Thornton's office and really talking through, you know, some of the stuff that's coming in. And I think, you know, we've worked together previously in the past. He was actually a professor of mine at Haidor University, but it's working with him, uh, and, and Mr. Dutrow and others to ensure that I get caught with speed as quickly as possible. Because really there's no time to spare with the, you know, budgets and also union negotiations around the corner. Uh, it's important to listen, but to also understand what's happening in front of you as it goes by you.
Thank you. And Mr. Cole.
Well, since I'm third, I'm going to echo what everybody else has been saying too. Um, you know, especially, especially for me. Um, to be honest, I've been away from Tiffin for a little while, just moving back, but I've had, you know, I've had interaction with town. But, um, yeah, it, it's, I think a lot of it's like any other job. When you first go in, it's listening and seeing what's been going on and how things are running and if there needs to be changes. You know, the last thing you want to do, um, I'll go to my coaching experience. Um, last thing you want to do is walk into a school and say, okay, this is all gone. We're going to start over day one. Um, you know, that, that just never ends well. Um, so I think you do, you have to stop and listen. Um, you know, go to, go to businesses, go to your first responders, go to the, all those type situations and, and see what is working, what isn't working. Um, I, I know, you know, like I said, Mayor Mott's has done a great job and, and Tiffin's a great place and we love living here. But I'm sure there's some problems behind the scenes too, that need to be heard and addressed and looked at. And, um, you know, so I think as, as Councilman Perkins said, you know, first 100 days is going to be a lot of just kind of getting your feet on the ground and seeing what's going on out there. Um, you know, what, what's really happening. So that, that's where I would stand in my first 100 days.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Before the first 100 days, I'd like to sit down with Mr. Thornton. So that I'm ready to roll on, on that first 100 days and to get my calendar ready. I also know all the department heads and I just love all of them. They're, they're really great people, but I don't know their staff that well. And so I want to get in there and meet their staff, see what their operations are. I drive by our Public Works Building all the time, but I've never been in there and I'd actually like to see how things rock and roll there too. So I want to hit the ground running by going into their locations and seeing how their day goes. And something I've al- always liked too, when I kind of compared the mayor as being a superintendent of a school district. I was on the board. We had a superintendent. And I always appreciated every time, every week before a meeting, he would call and ask if we had any questions about the agenda. And hopefully you guys don't mind me bugging you, but if I get the job, I would actually like to call you the day of the meetings to see if you have any questions or if there's something in the agenda that you're not sure why it's in there. I want to answer those questions before we get here that night. So that's what I'll be doing that first 100 days.
Yeah. Councilmember Wilkins, you have additional questions?
I'm really interested in leadership style. I studied it, um, my master's degree at Tiffin University. So real briefly, just explain to me your leadership style.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Riggs.
Perfect. I think the best leadership style that I've seen that works for me, as well as the folks I work with, is just being a supportive leader. And again, I think a lot of it goes back to, uh, for me, a lot of my relations, I, relationships I have go beyond just that business relationship. It's that personal relationship and trying to figure out what's that person's why. Uh, for example, I can tell you, uh, I look at every member of the Chamber of Commerce as, you know, almost as a colleague, but also, you know, I serve them and also with my employees the same way. So when we, before I started, when I started the chamber, we did things like personality tests, right? But a little, a little harder to do in a, in a system like the city of Tiffin, but a lot of it's trying to figure out, building that rapport with them as an individual and what's their why. And if you understand why, what's important to them and what's their why, you know, the rest will figure itself out. As long as you're supportive, your heart's in the right place and you have good intentions, I think the rest figures itself out. So I'm a very supportive leader. Um, and I think through my team at the chamber, I think they would echo those comments and we've, uh, done a really great job with our current team.
Thank you. And Mr. Cole.
Through my time in, in coaching and, and working with the company I'm with now, my leadership styles are really kind of building relationships and understanding, once again, what kind of makes people tick and, you know, draw, you know, having that, that, those personal relationships to where they feel comfortable coming to you and voicing, you know, if there's a problem, if there's something they like, they don't like. Um, you know, being able to, being able to have that free, um, conversations. And so I would say I'm more of a, I'm not in it for myself. I've never have been. Um, you know, it always, it's always about who you're helping and who you're serving, be it, you know, city council, be it the city of Tiffin, be it an athlete, be it, you know, a, a business that you're going in to work with. Um, it, it's really about being supportive and having personal relationships to the point where people know that they can, they can approach you with, with problems or, um, you know, things that are going well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Yanatuno.
Okay. Well, I tend to be inclusive, but I also am decisive. And I remember, um, again, speaking about the school board, uh, Mr. Don Colette, I'm sure many of you remember him. If he told you something, you could take it to the bank and believe it. And he one time said to me that what he really appreciated about me was that I could stand firm on an idea. But if somebody came up to me and explained something that they thought would be better to do, he said, I, I love how you'll change your mind if you see that you don't think that's right. And I, I like that about myself too. I'm not always right. I will listen to others. And if they give me a good argument, I will change my mind. Meanwhile, it, it hasn't shown too much on, on city council, but I've always been a cheerleader. And so I will be getting back out there and getting more positive and pushing things and stuff. I've, I've been a little subdued here, but I don't really tend to be that way. So I would become a cheerleader for the city again.
Thank you. And Councilmember Perkins.
Well, it's a multi-fold answer, to be honest. There's, uh, you know, you, you lead by example for one. Number two is, as I said, relationship building, but that starts with transparency and honesty. You know, it comes back to those things. And if you are not those things upfront, transparent and honest with everyone, you will not build their trust. You cannot be a leader. Um, so those are huge for me. You know, that is how you build a real team who works together, who's cohesive and you can get results. Um, I truly believe working side-by-side with people. Um, and it's, you know, th- there can't be a personal, a personal agenda. It, it has to be for the city, you know, in this case. You know, the case is it was for whatever business, but you know, th- that's just where I stand with that.
Thank you. That's it. Okay. Awesome. And Councilman Gillig.
Madam President, uh, do you mind if I ask an individual question to each member?
Absolutely.
I don't have a, a general question. I think to start with Mr., or who, who are we at in the rotation?
We're at Mr. Cole. We're back to the top.
Perfect. Now, Mr. Cole, earlier when you made your introduction, you said you'd heard some rumblings and you would like to be, uh, part of the solution. Uh, may I ask what those rumblings are and why are you the person to be part of that solution?
Part of the rumbles.
Um, there, there's, there's, there's been a few. A lot of, um, you know, just kind of sitting around at restaurants and I'm going to be honest, I eavesdrop a little bit because I like to see what's going on. Um, you know, there, there's some, there's some rumblings about, you know, certain people in town buying up all the properties and, you know, they're in it for themselves. Um, you know, or the housing market, those type of things. Um, why am I the right person for the job on that? Um, wow. Uh, I think I can, I can work relationships and hopefully, um, you know, explain to them the situations, you know, going on. Um, and like I said, my, my, my agenda was really to, you know, come in and be part of the solution. And, you know, I, it, there's nothing that drives me more up the wall than, like I said, hearing somebody grumble about something and they don't want to do anything about it. You know, so that was when, you know, that I really thought that, hey, you know, maybe I should throw my name in the hat. And, you know, hopefully maybe I can be part of the solutions on that through, through relationship building and, and allowing people to know and being, i- is, is Councilman Perkins said, being transparent, you know, letting them know exactly what is going on. You know, it's sometimes we try to keep things kind of hush, hush and secretive and that never works for anybody. They, they always think there's an underlying agenda. Um, so, um, there again for me for the, I, I would be relationship building, trying to explain and, and listen to people and hopefully be part of the solution.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Uh, just out of curiosity, this just relates to your, to your personal career. Uh, it looks like you've done some, some outstanding coaching in your career. Uh, but you seem to have moved on to some, some different avenues in track and field. And I would just, I would love to kind of hear your rationale from that and any lessons that you might've learned that would be, uh, beneficial.
Um, you know, I, I just, I always said to myself when I started coaching 26 years before I ended, um, that when I got to the point where getting on a bus on Saturday or going to a meet, um, became kind of, man, I don't know if I really want to do this. Then I'm not doing just for the athletes. Um, I'm not giving them my full, my full thing. Cause there's, there's part of me that's saying, I, I don't, this is it. I don't want to be here anymore. Um, and the, and the telltale sign was I had a national champion in the pole vault, our national indoors, our nationals outdoors are in California. And the whole time during the outdoor season, I was like, Zach, please don't qualify for nationals. Cause I want to try to get your poles out to California.
I didn't make it.
So that, that's when I kind of knew it was over. Um, and building relationships, we were building a new building at the school I was at, SUNY Brockport, um, new indoor facility. And I got to know the owners of the company of O-Sport USA, um, through relationships. They came to me and said, you know, have you ever thought about getting out of coaching? And it just happened to hit at the right time that I had thought about getting out of coaching. And I had some conversations with some other coaches about, is it time? You know, when is it time? Is it time? Um, and it was, it was time. So I, I loved rolling into this job because I was still part of the sport and it allowed me to bring quality facilities to schools that were looking to upgrade their facilities and those type of things. So that was kind of my reasoning.
Very good. And who's next in the rotation, if I may ask?
Uh, yeah, it would be Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Councilwoman Yanatuno, um, quick question for you. Would you say your experience on school board or your experience, uh, running a small business and serving as a representative for a number of different design companies would be more beneficial? Or, or can you even really quantify that in the role of mayor?
Actually I can. And I know I keep bringing up school board a lot, but I don't know if the public realizes the entire time I was on the school board, it was an unpaid job. But I ran my business around their schedule because I didn't want to hold them up. I just worked later at night. And they would always thank me for doing stuff. And I would always tell them, I thank you guys because I learned so much from them, working with these professionals and the different jobs that they do. I learned a lot from them. And I really appreciate that. And even though, you know, I graduated from there, I still kept learning as a school board member. And I think that's what's, and that's why I bring it up so much because to me it was a very important part of my life. I'm very dedicated to volunteerism. I did that before school board and that's how I was, I got their notice because I was doing so much behind the scenes with the schools to the point where Pat Hillmer from the public library at the time called me and asked me if I would take the seat. And so to me, I was honored to be asked, as just a regular small business owner and just a parent, asked to be a school board member. Cause that's how impressed I was with that. And so to me, it's very, very important. Business also, I learned different skills that way, working with people personally. But when it comes to running this city, it is so similar as a public entity as it was to running the school district.
Absolutely. And with, and you, as you alluded to, you dealt with some tough times during your tenure on school board. Uh, you know, uh, that was a while when I was starting my career as well. And we were in some financial difficulties. Um, what did you learn from those experiences that you feel may be helpful, you know, given the current trends of our economy?
You'll learn that it is so very tough to the point where I even cried with some staff members because I knew we were going to be cutting some. But it was amazing how it would turn around. It would turn around fairly quickly, you know, within the next year or two, things would get better. We would get our buoyancy back and, and we would be okay. And so you learned that in all things, things would just keep working around and it'll pivot around. Um, on a positive note though, I was just, uh, just president of the school board my first time and I got to sign my son's diploma, which that was quite exciting. And I was also the board president at the time we passed the middle school levy. And once I was no longer the board president, John Boldy assigned me to being the board member in charge of the project to build a new middle school because of my knowledge with contracts, blueprints and those kinds of things. And we brought that project in under budget and on, and ahead of time. So, so that was an exciting part of being a school board member.
Outstanding. Thank you. Um, Councilman Perkins?
Yep.
Councilman Perkins, obviously we've known each other, you know, since first grade. And you had mentioned, you know, but I, I was there for when you decided that you were, uh, interested in running for council. And, you know, I was, I was thrilled to see it. You know, it was tough when we were theoretically running against each other in the fall because, you know, people would ask me and I want to be like, yeah, no, Zach's great. You should vote for him too, but vote for me first. Don't really know how that works, but, um, well, what made you decide to, to throw your hat in the ring, uh, for the mayoral position?
Wow. Um, man, I want to say it was probably four or five years prior to that. I remember reaching out to Mayor Mott's and I told him I was interested in running for city council. And I just wasn't in the right place in my life to do something like that between schedules and children and all those kinds of things. That I would never be able to give the time that I want to, um, to counsel under the city. And the time had come and there was going to be, I was going to run no matter what. And then there was a vacancy due to Tyler Shuff, waiting commissioner's seat. And I knew there was vacancy and I wanted to go for that vacancy. Um, and like I said, the time was right. It, uh, it felt right. I had the time to do it. I was going to make the time to do it. And it was, uh, you know, I was at an age where it was time to do everything. was time to do everything I could to help make this place better for our kids. You know that. You know, that's what it's all about. It's not about us, you know? I know how it was when we were little and everything was closed. There was nothing downtown. You know, there was no stores. There was no jobs. You know, things were leaving. You know, I remember Sandra leaving and all those things. And it's, you just want to make sure it never gets back to that point. And you're doing everything you can to make it successful and a great place to raise a family.
Absolutely. Mr. Riggs, known you since, since football, since your junior year. Obviously just have a ton of respect for you. Consider you a valuable member of the community. But you've never served. You've never run for any elected office. You've never looked at any constituents and asked them to affix their name to your signature to be considered for a public position. And, you know, I completely understand the wording of the charting and how every, of the charter and how it has changed and how it's our duty to, to really look at the candidates we have and, you know, really see who's going to be the best fit. But what would you say to that, that you've never attempted to run for any public office and now are attempting to fill the mayoral vacancy?
So first of all, I would say, yes, I've never had the opportunity to run for public office. I've always had interest in it, though. When I worked as, with Tiffin-Sankt Economic Partnership, formerly Sidec, I was unable to run for public office due to the funding that, that was provided by city council. And then when I was at Tiffan University, you know, a lot of it is, you know, honestly, as Councilmember Perkins talked about, was timing one. And then two, I mean, honestly, if you look out in, in the landscape and you see somebody who wants to step up and lead and you know they're a great leader, you want to support them. And so at the time, the council positions, I think we had one appointment during that time when I was at Tiffan University and they didn't allow me because someone declared early on. And I was extremely supportive of that candidate I think at the time. Forget what candidate it was, but I was extremely supportive of them. So a lot of it's, you know, one, knowing when the time is right. And then two, also understanding, you know, kind of where you fit into the bigger picture. I became the chamber director shortly thereafter. We received funding from the destination Senate County side, things from both the city and the county, which again prohibited me from running. I've been a member of charter. I've been a member of Planning Commission, I was joining Board of Appeals and, and the list continues on and on. I've participated as a, as a voter. If you look at my voting record, it's extremely strong. As soon as I could vote, my senior year government teacher was Brian Catrullo, my football coach at the time, who, you know, pushed me to register to vote. And if it wasn't for him, I don't think I would have that civic mindset so early. So yes, I've not been a elected official, but I've also had many opportunities to serve this community in different capacities. And so for me, one, the timing wasn't right. And then two, I've been able to serve where I felt, you know, where, where it made sense. And so I've, again, I've never shied away from appointments. I've never shied away from opportunities that I felt, you know, really could support this community. If you look at my volunteerism track record, I joined an organization where I feel like I can add value. And then two, where I think is a fit.
Absolutely. And, you know, I am, I am ridiculously proud of you. You know, you know that. We've, we've talked about this, you know, a number of times. It does concern me, Mr. Riggs, that, you know, you've done a lot of hopping around and I also know how talented you are. And that would be, honestly, that would be a concern of mine, you know, especially in fulfilling the, the role of the vacancy. Because with the work you've done in Tiffan and Northwest Ohio, there will be, there will be people looking for you. You know, I'm, I'm pretty certain of that. And your track record shows that you are willing to jump. And that, that is a bit of a concern for me. So if there's anything you'd like to speak to in that regard, I know you can't promise people to indenture to, but...
For sure. I mean, I obviously understand the concern of, you know, the, the appearance that I would jump to an opportunity. I will say, I remember sitting in my office as an intern at, at the time, Sidec, and I said to myself, you know, hey, when the chamber job opens up eventually, down, down, down the road. That's something I'd be very interested in. And so I can tell you, moves I've, I've made have been strategic. I can tell you that, you know, again, sitting in these chambers for eight plus years, I've always sat here and I watched, you know, leaders like Mark Hayes, Rich Vo, Mayor Aramonts and so many other individuals that really served our community. If you look at, you know, who I am as an individual and what drives me, it's really serving this community. Whether in, you know, up to this point, serving has been charter, planning commission, joining Board of Appeals, really what I said, not the most exciting things. But for me, it's the value add. And I've sat in these meetings for eight plus years just soaking in knowledge. I've often gotten jokes from people saying, hey, Bryce, you want to go hang out tonight? I said, I can't. It's the first Monday. I gotta go to council. Do you have anything on the agenda? I said, no, I just want to learn. Because I realize that decisions made in this chamber impact our community, which impact my organization, which impacts the decisions I have to make to move it forward. So I would say, yes, it would appear that. But I think, you know, look at me as an individual, and what drives me is to serve. And I've not had the opportunity to serve. And I've always had interest in the mayor's role, like many. I didn't see it coming this early. And so when I found out about the announcement, I was one shocked. And then two, I'm not going to lie, a light bulb popped up and said, you know, Bryce, this is your time to serve and, and to move the community forward. Aaron 's done a great job with his leadership, his transparency with social media and all these different things, working with department heads. I could see that myself. So that's what I would, you know, I know it doesn't fully address your concerns, but, you know, if you look at my resume and you look at other resumes that have been submitted as well, there's, you could say the same about other candidates as well.
No, no, absolutely. Absolutely. Just overall, I'm, I'm just very pleased we've got, you know, four, you know, very fine folks that have put their name forward. And I appreciate everybody taking the time to answer all the questions this evening. And, you know, I, I know it's inviting a big old target on your back. You know, I remember, you know, I think my first week of council, I got called and yelled at for time order cable, changing a policy. That's got nothing to do with me, sir. But by golly, you wind up being the target of a lot of different things. And I'm just very grateful. We have four folks that are willing to put in for this. It's pretty neat to see. Thank you, Madam President.
No other questions?
No other questions.
Awesome. Councilmember Yana Tuno?
I will follow Mr. Perkins's footsteps and say I abstain.
Okay. That leads us to Councilmember Jones. I know you got questions.
Yana Tuno?
Here we go.
He's got a book over there. I know he does.
Oh, no.
Buckle up. We start with...
There's no ribbon cutting today.
I better stretch.
Councilwoman Yana Tuno, correct? Start with her?
Uh, no, we'll start back up to Mr. Cole. If you're doing a group question.
Okay.
Mr. Cole, on your resume here, you've been all over the United States. You've been to cities and have on here Ada and North Carolina. Heard you mention California. Visiting all these cities, what is one item that you could take from these cities and bring it to Tiffan that maybe we don't have?
I would say probably one of the biggest things I see is some type of substantial industry. Even as small as Ada is, they have the Wilson Football Factory that's employing hundreds of people. You know, and that's, that's probably the one, you know, we do have some in Tiffan, but I think as, as time changes, we haven't, we haven't moved forward in kind of what industry we have here in town. So that's probably, I think, I think industry is, is what's going to help us get through the next 20, 30 years. I mean, it's, we have to start, you know, bringing some, some new people into town. As, as people get older, they retire. I don't know if I was, you know, my dad was crazy at 86, still out shoveling snow. As many times I tried to get him to move to Charlotte, he wouldn't do it. He loved Tiffan. I'm in the house I've been in for 50 years. I'm not moving. But there are those people that are moving out. And, you know, you have to kind of keep that, that dynamic going. So I would, I would say some type of sustainable industry in town would, would want to bring to it.
Thank you. Same question or different question? You have the same question for the next candidate?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Councilwoman Yana Tuno. Yana Tuno, have, one thing for me stood, you stood out from the other three, which said you would not run again after a year and a half. I'm just curious, why not run for another term, for your term?
Well, I talked to President Boyle about this also. This is happening really fast. And so we're, we're talking like six to eight weeks at the most. And I just feel I have enough experience to get us moving right now without having to really do a lot of job training with it. And then I want the voters to be able to pick. I want to turn that over to them in less than a year and a half and let them pick who they want to be mayor. So I think I can get us to that point in good shape. And like I said, I can take the brunt of, I'm not Mayor Montz, you know, because that's going to be tough for whoever gets it. They're going to be compared all the time. I won't have to worry about that because I'm only there to keep us moving, keep us under budget and get us ready for the next mayor. And so that's why I look at it that way.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Riggs, what did I have for him? On your resume, you talked about grant writing. And were you the one writing the grants or was team members writing the grants and you had it on your resume?
So there are some basic minimum grant, I guess, requirements in some of the projects you'd work with in academic development. But a lot of it is really working with the Regional Growth Partnership, Jobs Ohio and other entities. They work with, work with them to identify these projects. And then you facilitate that conversation with the, the industry or that, that organizations that's looking to grow. They actually fill that grant out themselves and, you know, record their, you know, payroll jobs, new jobs. But really, a lot of it has to do with identifying, you know, you know, that there's state funding available for this. And then you understand that the local organization's looking to do that. And so how do you match with, you know, what federal state dollars are available to an opportunity here locally? So did not do it myself, but a lot of it's the facilitation aspect of it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Perkins, 20 years of business operation and then currently you're self-employed. What was your rationale there or thought process or what changed or?
Well, I think part of that is a restraint based upon the type of hours that are needed to work in-house in hospitality industry. You're talking late nights and lots of weekends. If you're a true leader in that industry, that's when you work. It's a simple fact. If you are not working those hours and being in those places at those times, you're not a real leader in that industry. That's when most of the business happens. And that's when you need to be there. So you get to the point where there's a, there's a choice that needs made in that industry where it's going to be, am I going to spend all my nights and weekends there? Or am I going to make time to be able to go to a baseball game? You know, it's not that I don't want to work. That has nothing to do with it. But at some point, you have to get out of that part of it and move on. Okay.
No more questions? Okay. All right, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you. Who's first up?
Uh, Mr. Cole, if it's a group question. Yep.
Okay. I have four questions for each of you. And then I will probably have some questions from your resume as well. Mr. Cole, you are the mayor of Tiffan. The EPA just called and reported, reported that the long-term control plan for sewer separation for the city was shortened by three years. What will be your first action?
My first action is going to be getting with the people that are involved with that and setting, listening to them, seeing what plans can be done, what changes are going to have to happen and how we're going to have to do, what we're going to have to do to move that forward with those changes. I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not EPA expert. So I'm going to have to go to the people who are, you know, who, who know that. So that's kind of where I would be.
If anybody wants the question repeated, I will throughout my series.
Okay, thank you.
Next?
Uh, would be Councilmember Yana Tuno.
Same question.
Same question.
Okay. First thing I would do is call the administrative team together, especially out there at the water treatment plant and figure out what we're going to do.
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Perkins?
Yeah, I think the first, first action is going to be getting with Dale, probably Matt and Brandon Burner, discussing options with them. And then if no action can be done on our part, considering we have a long-term control plan on that to shorten those up, I think we just go back to the EPA and show them our plan and probably ask for an extension. I mean, that would make the most sense.
And then, Mr. Riggs?
Perfect. So I think initially, obviously, again, back to the team aspect. So Minister Thornton, Matt Watson, Brandon Burner, had that conversation, I think, of one thing that we know is history repeats itself. I know when the long-term control plan was initially released, the EPA was extremely aggressive in what their intentions were for the city of Tiffan when they wanted it to be completed by. There was some negotiation upfront in terms of, okay, if you can get this much work done in the first 10 years of the plan, that we can be successful and we can move it out a longer time period. So I think one thing is, again, I've worked with the EPA in my role with Sidec slash TSEP. And those folks, a lot of, you know, my experience with them is, if as long as you move the ball forward and you show progress and you show a plan in place, they generally allow you and, and are willing to work with you on that plan. Again, this place was in place and approved by the EPA. I wouldn't expect them to do, move it up three years, but if so. It's having those conversations with them and, okay, so you want us to move it up three years? Is there something we can do on the front end today to move the process and invest more dollars back into, you know, the long, long-term control plan to help really, you know, you know, keep you at ease. And so that's kind of what I would do is, again, work with the team, work with the EPA, determine is there, you know, really to negotiate and see if there's something that we can meet in the middle that allows them to be happy and allows us to be successful as well.
Thank you.
Next question. I love this one because Jefferson Street has come up every year.
Oh, no.
1,500 residents have signed a petition to request that Jefferson Street be made a one-way street. What action would you take?
Councilman Yana Tuno, you are up first.
It would be a two-way.
Jefferson is one-way.
Two-way street.
Yes, I'm sorry, two-way street.
I'd be like, whoa.
It's already taken care of.
It's a one-way street.
It's like, granted, it's yours.
Signs are up already.
South Jefferson.
Okay, so it's, it's Jefferson Street turning it into a two-way street.
Correct.
Well, considering when I learned how to drive, the streets were already one-way. Wow. I wouldn't even want it switched at this point. I wouldn't know how to drive it anymore. I really wouldn't be in support of that.
So the action you would take would be?
I'd listen. If they can give me a good plan, I will think about it. Check with the team to see if they think, especially because we've got a team that handles street questions and things like that. See how they feel about it. And if it's doable, then make it happen. But personally, I wouldn't be, you know, supportive of it.
Thank you. Councilman Perkins?
I think the proper procedure would be for that to go to Traffic and Safety Committee. And then whatever their findings were, if it was possible, if it made sense, then we'd present that to council for discussion and then proceed from there.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Riggs?
So again, I'll echo that, again, history repeats itself. I know this has been a topic that's been brought up, I think, in the past. And I know that maybe a conversation I had with, has had with city engineer, Matt Watson. And a lot of it has to do is, again, I wouldn't say no myself, but because, again, I'm not the expert with that. You know, I don't know turn radiuses. I don't know those things. And I think when it was originally looked at a few years back, maybe more, a lot of this is, there's a concern when you take a one-lined road, one-way road and you turn it to two-way, do you, you know, really inhibit turn radiuses? That makes it more dangerous. And that's a Traffic and Safety Committee thing. I know that, again, you know, there's been things taken in Traffic Safety Committee such as, you know, lights being removed because, you know, the cost to improve the different things that are located within a traffic light. But again, that's something I think that goes to them. Those are experts and they allow you to really do, you know, if they can do an internal analysis, fantastic. If you have to take external, which I think is the last thing you should do from a taxpayer standpoint, then, you know, someone needs to look at it, fantastic. Get some expert opinion. And then from there, then council, you know, if something's brought to the table, the council would have a discussion. I think you, then you go back to the study that either Matt Watson and Brandon Burner, the team, have put together. Or if it's an, you know, external entity that does this, really take the facts. And so it wouldn't be Bryce Riggs saying, no, in my official capacity. But again, it's the, here's the data that supports either to do or not to do it. And then, you know, what's the pros and cons with each side?
Thank you. And Mr. Cole?
I think you have to echo what everybody else said. You have a committee that's already in place for this. So my first thing would be, you know, go and listen to what, why they want that changed. And then move it to the committee, the committee that's already in place for that. Let them, let the experts look through everything and let them, you know, tell yes or no, why it should or shouldn't be. But I can tell you that when I was growing up, when we switched Market Street and some of them to one-way, when it first had, and I'm, I'm dating myself, so bear with me. It was, there was some concerns. You had some people driving the wrong way on a one-way street for many years because that was what they were accustomed to. So... So I think you have to take it, you have to really kind of look as long as Jefferson's been, you know, that way. We got, we got to take a look and see, you know, if it's going to be more of a safety issue, if it's going to, you know, really help the situation and go from there.
Thank you.
Next question. I believe that our country will be facing, will be heading into a recession in a very short time. What will you do as mayor to protect our finances?
That will start with Councilman Perkins.
Thank you. You know, it's, it's the same thing that I've, I'm going to echo the same thing I've said many times already. It's, it's a twofold system where you must go through the budget. And they brought up teamwork, of course. I mean, I don't want to feel like with my answers, I'm excluding the team here. There's amazing administration here. You know, you want to go through that budget and you want to fine tune that budget as much as you can, but you have to continue to push for growth. It's really the key to making it through it. It's been proven in business. It's been proven in government that if you continue to do those things, you will make it out with less bruising. We have a $5 million pot right now. And through a recession, it'd be very easy to get rid of that if you're not very careful. So.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs.
Thank you. I think the first thing, obviously, again, I answered this question kind of at the start, was working with your team, again, determining what the true needs of the department heads are and then developing the plan that ensures that, you know, the city's able to be in a strong financial position. I know one thing is when, you know, budgets get tightened, what's usually the first thing to go? And a lot of communities have roads and bridges. And so obviously, I've championed that through my work on the Road and Bridge Levy campaign to ensure that those dollars would be there. So when things get tough, our infrastructure doesn't go down. And so I think, again, understanding what, you know, what's the first thing to go? Those dollars are allocated aside. Then we're not taking, you know, dollars away from, you know, the general fund to pay for other things like roads and bridges. It's extremely important. But I would, you know, echo working with the team, as Councilmember Perkins talked about, you know, the nest egg. The unaccommodated balance is at the highest it's ever been in, I think, the longest time or not forever. And so it's really taking those dollars and ensuring that you're spending them in the proper place. And it's easy, you know, when times are good to undertake those dollars and put them to, you know, you know, special projects and those kind of things. But you get to understand that it's really, you know, it's a wave. And so you got to understand, you know, we're at our high point now. And then, you know, three weeks from today, with, you know, interest rates going through the roof and cost of gas and all these other things, inflation, well, we could be at our lowest point within literally months. And so it's ensuring that those dollars are there, you know, like the county does with the Budget Stabilization Fund, that we're able to plan for the long term. So then we're not, again, strapping our future with more issues and those kind of things. And I credit Mayor Aaron Montz and his administration for playing for the long term and not just the short term. I know that, you know, we've got more, the city's got more money than they've ever had. And working with him on budget things, he's been very frugal and he's been very, you know, how, how are these dollars going to benefit our community and the residents? And so if you think, you know, residents first and community first, I think it all plays on itself.
Thank you. Mr. Cole.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal a little bit from Councilman Perkins over there. And I had never really thought of it as a twofold thing. But what I would do is similar to what we did here during the pandemic with the company that I work for. You know, being an international company, shipping internationally, you have to take step back and really look at, okay, what's, what's the best use of money? How's, where, where to funnel that money? Where to do those things? And that's, that's really the easy part. It's easy to go through a budget with a group and say, okay, this really is kind of extra. We don't really need to do this. I do agree with Mr. Riggs here that, you know, infrastructure is one that you can't really do away with. You want to, but it's really tough because is, as Councilman Perkins said, is you have to keep moving forward. You know, and that's, that's what we had to do with our company was still, even though we were trimming budgets and, you know, hey, you're not going, you're not flying first class anymore. You're going to go back behind the curtain, which, which hurts after you've been in front of the curtain. You know, you have to keep pushing forward with sales. If we would have just shut down sales, we would have never made it through. We had to keep pushing for sales and, and it was, it was, it was tough at that time. A lot of schools were scared what was going to happen with COVID and where their money was going to be and how their enrollment was going to be. But you have to keep, you have to keep pushing forward and kind of working with them and building those relationships where they know that you're not trying to hurt them anyway financially, but you're trying to stabilize things and get things through. So I do agree it's twofold. Yes, the easy part's going through the budgets with all your people and, you know, saying, hey, what do you need? What don't you need? But the hard part's going to be, we still have to keep pushing to bring in into revenue, into the, into the city and, and jobs and things into the market. So that would be where I would stand on that one.
Thank you. And then Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Okay. They're obviously all good points. As far as the nest egg, I would not touch that at all if at all possible because we need that for future growth. The Road and Bridge Levy really wouldn't be affected by that other than its own amount would reduce because we can't touch it other than for roads and bridges. So that's a nonentity with that. And Mayor Montz set a good example for what we would need to do during COVID when he asked everybody to start looking at their budgets and what can we pull back. And so I would start with the game plan he showed before and follow in that footstep.
Last, last question. What have you done in past or current employment to develop leaders?
Mr. Riggs, we'll start with you.
Perfect. In my current role, so I've had my first management type of role with the chamber recently. I've, in the last year, I recruited back an individual to our community that used to live here and lived in another state and recruited them back. And really, a lot of, for me, is, you know, you've set me by a great example. It's Marissa Stevens who's in the audience today. But really, for me, that's a young leader of our community. And that's one example I've been able to show. And my role is, you know, doing the things the right way. And again, giving them opportunity to lead and succeed. I think one thing is I'm fairly fortunate that people have given me opportunity to succeed and have opportunities in this community. I think that's what makes Tiffin and Seneca County truly special. And I think if you don't pass it on to the next person, that you're responsible for managing or that, you know, the individual in your, in your office, then really you aren't doing them any good or our community any good. And I would also, you know, echo with my volunteer experience. Again, it's in the leadership role as, you know, the board chair for young professionals, for the different levy committees. It's how do you empower folks on that committee to be successful? And again, I go back to the find their why, what's important to them. Obviously, they're serving this community or serving in that capacity for a reason. How do you tap into that and allow them to grow? So I think the biggest thing is, you know, really working with them and it's the communication style. I'm a big communicator. Transparency is important. And if you really continue checking with them, they'll, they'll give you what they need to be successful. They want to be successful.
Thank you. Mr. Cole.
Well, being in coaching for 26 years, you have a lot of opportunities to mentor people into leadership roles. And, and the way I would do that is, you know, as, as they come into a situation, you try to show them what's right, what's wrong, how to do things right, what's wrong. And slowly start letting them make those decisions and, you know, keep, keep mentoring them. And that's, that's the biggest, you know, the biggest thing throughout the whole thing is, is allowing them to start to make some decisions. You know, I always told parents, I'm here to help your, your, your son or daughter through navigate the higher education system. Not at all times am I going to treat them like babies. I'm going to let them make some decisions. Now, if those decisions are going to cause bodily harm or have them removed from the institution, I'm probably going to stop them, you know, and tell them, hey, this is what you need to be doing. And it's same with the business that I have today, developing dealers, our network, dealer network. It's, it's about giving them the information, showing them how to do it, communicating with them, standing beside them until they feel like they're ready to kind of walk on their own and, you know, continue to be there as a, as a resource for them so that they, that they feel like they have somebody behind them. And people will be more of a leader when they feel like, wow, I've got somebody kind of standing behind me a little bit and have my back. So that's kind of the way I've worked at developing leaders.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
My entire life has been volunteerism. I have always volunteered. And I started out at Noble School as PTO president eventually. And they then asked me to serve on strategic planning. So I was one of two parents on a 25-member team to develop Tiffin City Schools' strategic plan at that time. And one of the things out of strategic planning was to create a PTO for the middle school. And at that time, the middle school was the six, new six, seven building in the standalone eight. And they said, can you do something to get these PTOs together? And so at that time, we had six different school buildings with Bloomville and Clinton still with us. And I developed a plan to bring these guys all together. And as far as I know, to this day, the middle school PTO is still operating, correct?
Oh, yes.
And so they're still operating. So fast forward to all of our budget cuts when I told you how we reorganized the pre-K, the one, two, three, four, and four, five. And they, they asked me again, can you do something with the PTOs? Because they're only one in two years. How do you have continuity for a PTO program with only one or two grades at each building? And so some of them got, especially some of the principals got a little territorial because they thought their building made more money than others. And so it was a conversation I had to keep having with people, but they came together. And to this day, they are now called the pre-K through five PTO for Tiffin City Schools. And they're doing a great job. If you'll notice out in the community, you're not getting hit with several fundraisers from all these different buildings. You're getting hit with one fundraiser a year from them. And so I'm very proud of the fact that I do all this stuff through volunteering. The same way with Safety Week. Safety Week is very important to me. It's a very hard, tough, long week, but I help with, Sergeant Jared Watson created it 10 years ago. And to this day, it runs exactly the same as it did then. What I do to help him is I develop the handouts that go to every single parent K through three to sign up to volunteer. I then get this stuff to Pat Smith, who adds the teachers to it. And then it goes out. I pick up at every building, all these signups. I call the bus garage to make sure we have busing. I call the treasurer to make sure we have funding. I call Bryce and hopefully Bryce, I need a little more money, I think, this year.
Yes, John.
For that one. And I also coordinate over 100 volunteers. And then we have 10 core parents that are volunteers from the community that work with it also. And I spend the whole entire week teaching 40 classes of it. And so it's not that I'm mentoring anybody, but I think it's so important to make sure these little guys know how to cross streets, know how to be safe, know what to look for and to listen for so that they are safe. And you think they learn it? No. Every year, I think, oh, they're going to be bored. They heard me say this last year. No, it's like they've never heard it before. So they get it four times through us. And so it's a, it's a great project and Sergeant Watson needs commendated for that. He does a great job with that. And he also teaches too.
Maybe it's a project we should take to the colleges as well.
I see where the one at TU got flattened by a car the other day. Thanks. So your, your question, I don't, I'm sure if I in a roundabout way answered it, but I like mentoring children to keep them safe. That's a lot of what I do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perkins.
What was the question?
What have you done in past or current employment to develop leaders?
Oh, man. Um, that's all you do. That's all you do in that industry is develop leaders. You're always, you're always trying to bring in people to help you run successful businesses, always. That is your goal. Your goal is to make them as good or better than what you currently are. They need to be able to take over. They need to be able to run the operations. And they need to be efficient in doing so. So that's, that's the job, honestly. I mean, I, I know I don't give all the fluff of the big answers, but to me, a lot of these answers are very short and sweet and to the point. I'm sorry if that's, you know, nobody enjoys that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just had some questions on resumes.
Sure.
Who's first?
We are back at the top again, Mr. Cole.
Okay. Mr. Cole. Looking at your resume, I see that you currently hold two positions. Are you willing to, you're looking at me like you don't hold two positions?
It's, it's hard to explain the way our company's set up for financial reasons. O-Sport USA and JBA are the same company. One is, one is our installation side of things. One is our manufacturing side of things.
Okay.
But to answer your question, would I be willing to give up my job?
Yes.
You know, I would probably say, my wife will tell you I'm semi-retired anyways. But my, my two owners are very good at allowing me to work with what I need to do. And they know the job's going to get done. So probably through the first year and a half, I would, I would probably keep doing my, my first, my job with OST as well. And then decide after that first year and a half, if I wanted to run for election or whatnot. If I was going to run for election, then I would, I would retire from my sales position.
Thank you. Next.
Is Councilwoman Yanatuno.
The only, the only concern I had with, with Dawn's resume was not seeking election after your year and a half. I would, I would like to think that whoever we elect to this position would have the desire to run for election in another year and a half. Next.
Councilmember Perkins.
Well, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, yes.
I want to comment to that.
Okay, go right ahead.
There was a kind of question in there. Just because I'm not running again in a year and a half and with any of these guys, that's not to say they'll be reelected or they'll be elected. Any one of them, and myself included, if I was going to run, they could pick somebody else. So it's not a guaranteed thing anyways. And so, like I said, my, my hope, I love Tiffin and I just want to keep us moving forward. I just want to get, get you guys doing okay and let the next person, let the citizens pick who they want.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Perkins is next.
Perkins? Oh, boy. I got a whole list here.
There we go.
I have nothing for Perkins.
And then Mr. Riggs is next.
The only comment I have on, Mr. Riggs is the same that Ben threw out was, you only served as Assistant Director of Development at Tiffin University for 21 months. Then you moved on to Executive Director, Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce. And you've held that position for 24 months and now you're seeking yet another job.
So again, I'll, I think I'd echo the comments I made back to Councilmember Gillig. Again, I think it's one of those things that I don't think it's ever a perfect opportunity to go to another position. But I think one thing is true, if you're going to leave to another organization, you know, one thing is that you leave it better than what you found it. I think every organization I've ever worked for, I've left it better than the place I've found it, one. And then two, I think with the opportunity with, one of the situations with the Director of Development job, and then my transition to the chamber is a couple of different things. So very much my lifestyle of working for Tiffin University was on the road. Very much like President Boyle, it was a lot of traveling and a lot of visiting alums. I'm not going to lie, when COVID hit, Councilwoman, Councilmember Wilkins can tell you, our life changed dramatically. My life went from being on the road and fundraising dollars to then I was now forced to literally log, go through and file paperwork. And so for me, it was, you know, sort of, one, the opportunity with the chamber, something I've always wanted to do. And then two, my life transitioned so much with COVID and travel didn't go back to normal, what I was, my job was like for, you know, honestly, over a year and a half. And so I got hired to do a certain responsibility. I felt, you know, I added the most value doing what I was doing. And to be fair, I didn't think it was fair to, for me to sit there and file paperwork. And, you know, having Zoom calls with alums wasn't the same. So, you know, I would say, you know, again, one thing is, you know, out there is that I've been in council meetings for the last eight years of my life. I've always had an interest in the mayor's role. Again, serving on council wasn't an opportunity that I could do just through the organizations I worked through and I worked for because they provided funding to those organizations. So yes, it may look like I've, you know, strategically moved to different positions. But I think one thing has been consistent, I've been in these chambers more often than not for the last eight years or watching and they come from my own home. So it's what I would rebuttal back with. I understand that there's a concern. But I also understand that, you know, I have a strong desire to lead, especially lead this community into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gillig.
If I may, just to follow up to that, Madam President. Now, Bryce, so obviously you're entitled to pursue any positions you want, but you were also seeking your MBA at TU and that was one of the reasons why you, you sought some employment there for a bit, if I'm not mistaken, or was that part of?
Very much so. I joked that when I graduated from undergrad at Heidelberg University, that I would never seek student, additional student loan debt. that I would never seek additional student loan debt. And then when the opportunity became available, actually, it was Councilmember Wilkins who approached me and said, hey, we have this role at our office, knowing your ability to build relationships, you'd be a great fit. And for me, I wanted to go pursue my MBA, one. And then, two, really, again, develop my skill set. And working at Tiffin University, it really assisted me with my fundraising skills, my relationship-building skills, that in turn really have paid off at the chamber, and has allowed us to be successful from the financial side, as well as the membership side of things. So yes, it played an extreme part in my decision-making process. And I'm happy to report, I do have no more additional student debt from my MBA. And two, I have my MBA.
I actually have a couple of questions, and these will be, I guess, for everybody. I would like to hear from everyone. And some of it was maybe a little bit touched throughout the questions that were asked already. But currently, Mayor Monz does a phenomenal job of going to just about everything in this town. You always see him out everywhere, and definitely goes above and beyond. And it's part of the reason why people consistently say this role has big shoes to fill. So I don't know what everyone's current career schedules look like, or your schedules, your typical schedule today, but what does that look like for you to really? Is that a major transition for each of you to dedicate that time that's required for this role? And if so, are you up for it? So Councilwoman Yanatuno, I'll actually start with you as where we're at in the process.
Well, as I said, I'm retired, so I've got a lot of time. And I'm doing well health-wise, finally. And so I think that's another reason why I kind of want to get at it and busy again, because I was down for so long, and it started driving me crazy. And so it's just not a problem for me. And like I said, if I got the job, and if it's okay with you, I'd actually like to start trying to work on it sooner, before I take over.
Sure.
To work with them. So it's just not a problem. I plan on being at events, and attending the meetings I need to attend. So nope, I plan on being a full-time, around-the-clock mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Actually, I addressed this in a press release. I understand the seriousness of this role. I understand it's full-time, but it's more than that, it's a lifestyle. And I get that, you know? And there's a lot of events, there's a lot of things happening. And will I be at every single event ever? I don't know about all that. But I will be at most of them, I will always show face, I will always support the city. Now, the only thing is, I might have to drag a couple of kids along to do that, you know? So, but yeah.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Riggs?
Thank you, Council President. I would say, and again, Aaron Monz has set a new standard of what engagement looks like to the public from the mayor's position, whether it be social media, whether it be community engagement. And of all the things that could potentially scare an individual about, you know, what shoes to fill from Mayor Aaron Monz, this probably scares me the least. If, you know, I can attest back to the crowd, to the public comment, you know, citing what they say, is that I'm extremely engaged in the community. I go to everything I possibly can. My poor girlfriend Allison and Doug Tucker join me often. Last night, I think we were coming home from the e-screen from the Thursday at Toons, and we made it to successfully every picnic table before we got home, and it only took two hours. So I can tell you, for me, that's to be expected. I don't, to have a mayor that isn't engaged like Mayor Aaron Monz was, to be as transparent as Mayor Aaron Monz, to me, it doesn't make sense. And that's what the community has asked for, and I think that's the community wants. They want a mayor who's actively engaged, understands what's important, and then also supports them in public, and then behind the scenes as well.
Mr. Cole?
You know, I've been in positions where long hours are not uncommon. If anybody's ever been in collegiate coaching, you know you're working probably 75 to 85, maybe more hours a week, in going to a lot of different events. My job now allows me to set my schedule and be able to work things. When I was, when my daughter was in school, she played on, I helped coach her travel softball team. They had a big tournament. I had a meeting in Seattle, Washington. So I made the flight from Charlotte to Seattle and back in one day, so that I could be back in time to coach softball game. You know, I'm always on the go. I hate to sit still. There's nothing worse in the evening than just kind of sitting and staring at a TV. So going to different events, and that's one thing that my wife and I have said, you know, and people have asked us, you know, what's it like coming from Charlotte to coming back to Tiffin? You know, you must be bored. No, we're not. We're out doing more in Tiffin than we ever did in Charlotte. I just, it's a great community, and I would want to be out with the community in doing those things. So, you know, if it's 80 hour, back to 80 hours a week, then that's what we do. So that's not an issue with me, and I'm a social person. I want to be out meeting people anyways. My wife and my dog get tired of me being around the house most of the time. So they're ready for me to be out and engaged in the community.
Awesome, thank you. The other question I have is, given the tight time restrictions that we're at with this role, if you were chosen for this position, do you have any time restraints that would prohibit you to fulfill this position on or before August 5? And Mr. Perkins, I'll start with you, or Councilmember Perkins?
Absolutely not. I've discussed everything with anyone that I'm currently working with. They all understand exactly what's happening. So I've been completely transparent with them on the process and time restraints that would happen. So there would be zero issues.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Riggs?
So I would say that I've had conversations with both my chair, Dr. Holbrook, as well as members of my executive committee regarding the situation. They are aware of the possibilities that may happen. They're also aware of different resources that exist in the marketplace that will allow us to continue our operations at the chamber and destination Seneca County, as we have currently involved some coaching and some other means as well. From my standpoint, and I think from the standpoint of our Board of Trustees, at least the executive committee, that we have a plan in place, or at least underway, that would allow us that schedule to be possible.
Thank you. And Mr. Cole?
Absolutely none. I've kept my two owners in the loop on this the whole time. They both said when we were here and working at Heidelberg and Tiffin City Schools that I knew too many people anyways, that eventually I would be mayor of Tiffin. And I don't think they thought it would really happen so quickly that I would try. But they're all on board, they understand. And like I said, there would be absolutely no reason why I couldn't start.
Thank you. And then, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Which I've already answered it. I'm retired, I can start anytime.
Awesome, all right, thank you. Does anyone else have any additional questions for council, or for the candidates, excuse me, from council? Yes?
I have comments.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure what our January, or July 11th meeting is gonna consist of, if we're gonna do a question-answer period again.
We can, yeah, it's up to council. We can have that as part of the process before we vote.
Okay, we can discuss that at our next scheduled meeting.
Yeah, the July 5th meeting, yep.
One thing I would suggest is, being in this seat, it's important for me to make eye-to-eye contact with Mr. Cole and Mr. Riggs, and I'm not able to. If we could possibly have them in the front row, in the audience, it's important to me to have eye-to-eye contact, and it's very difficult with three or four other bodies. I would just like to address council members, if I may. This is probably the most important decision we as council members are ever gonna make. We need to take this seriously. We need to investigate. We need answers to our questions, which you have provided. But it's not a popularity contest. It's a decision-making process of who can best lead this city. And we need to take this seriously, and we need to ask the right questions. Everybody knows and loves Aaron Monz. Aaron Monz is not gonna be here. It's gonna be up to you to make the mayor's job your job. I'm sure that you're gonna continue with many of the plans that Mayor Monz has set forward, but this is gonna be your baby for a year and a half. And we're all gonna need to be one, to make this happen. And I just hope that everyone is very serious during our deliberations, and we will select the right person.
Agreed, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or additional questions for the candidates? Well, I do want to thank all the candidates for their interest in the role. As you know, Councilman Lippert just outlined, obviously, it's extremely important, and it's probably the most important decision Oliver will make while I'm on council, and many of us. So thank you for your time this evening, your interest, as well as everyone else's time. I know Friday night on 4th of July weekend is not ideal, but again, we gotta do what we gotta do. So thank you very much. Is there any other business to come for council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone.